The Open Meetings Act is located on the entrance wall of this room 903. And if we could go around and say our names and what department we're with. Marianne Borgerson, County Board.
Eugene Morgan, County Board.
Tim McDowell, County Resources.
Matt O'Leary, County Resources.
Karen Boit, County Resources.
Diane Carlson, County Administration.
Jill Lorenz, County Finance.
Sherry Larson, County Clerk's Office.
Constance Myerendorf, County Clerk's Office.
Marcus C. Martin, County Administration.
Clara Gouda, County Board.
Patrick Blumindal, County Director.
Mike Boyle, the Sunshine District.
So today on the agenda, we have a number of items that we thought would be most helpful to have a conversation about. And maybe start having some HR committees add a little bit more in regularity. And so the first one we're going to talk about is the Civil Service Commission and the HR Metrics Report that Karen Boishar, HR Director, has prepared for us to look at and discuss.
Me and then I started, I don't know, meeting maybe in March. And we meet once a month just to kind of go over some things that HR is working on. And so one of the things we were talking about is the types of things that occur in our department, the types of things that we're doing and numerically what we're doing. So this is just 2016 statistics. We did 112 job audits. We had 215 job postings. We processed 14,957 applications. We hired 252 people. We did 13 formal complaint investigations. We had 14 civil service hearings. We helped process 11 NEOC/EEOC charges. We had 895 training sessions. Since July, we have processed 450 FMLA. And I kind of want to put a caveat on that because that's 450 employees. Some of those employees may have one or three or four actual FMLAs. So this number is probably a little on the low side. We processed approximately 187 separations. What's not included in here is that every single Oracle change or every single thing that happens to an employee, we end up doing the data entry for that, whether that's an address change, phone number, an org number because they are moving from this grant funded to this grant funded. Supervisor changes, location changes, promotion step increases. And then we also maintain all this pay scale structures, the job classification structures, and all the backup program setups and all the testing and everything associated with that from an Oracle standpoint. We also administer and practice the written exams for 911 and corrections. And then there's a list of some other things there. And then in addition to this, we also do all the record keeping, all the filing for every piece of paper that's generated, including... We also maintain the Corrections Departmental files, which is the only department we actually do that for. So that's just kind of a brief overview.
I don't need this now unless you pull it out in half. But I'm curious, are we treating women equally with pay? That's the first question. If there's some way to gauge that, I suppose, when we're working side by side, then you might be able to like to know that.
Okay.
The other one is, I want to know what we're doing, what the history's been of hiring minorities. And, you know, maybe over whatever reason, I'll get into the studies. But I like to, you know, look around the table. You know, I understand, I think we need to get some people of color and bilingual and Spanish and all that kind of stuff. We need to isolate people like Muslims or anything. But I want to make sure that our workforce represents the community.
Yeah. Right now, and we have been working on it and continue to work on it, is every two years we have to update for our grants our Equal Employment Opportunity Plan. And we have to do a report. Several of them have to be reported to the Department of Justice. And we have to do an analysis of the utilization or underutilization of minorities or protected class individuals. And we do have some pockets where we have an underutilization. And...
Do you do recruiting?
We do some recruiting, but we don't have a lot of staff. But the departments, I know, for example, we assisted in a very small way with a huge recruitment effort that was undertaken by the Sheriff's Office, Corrections, Omaha Police Department to recruit especially female minority individuals.
And of course, it's, those are places where they're really, really obvious and it's great they do that. But what I'm looking at is, you know, in a county and all those other places where make sure they're represented. I, a little anecdote, I always have a story, but I recruited a woman from a restaurant in South Omaha. She's really smart, really cool, bilingual, wonderful personality. I'd like to see her become a receptionist somewhere. And she went like this, and I'm like, I'm not committed. So anyway, I feel bad. But anyway, she's great, you know, and she's still there. But anyhow, you've answered my question. I don't want to take up any more of your time. Thank you.
And the EEOP plan will be published.
It's great.
Out on our website. That's a requirement, so when that's fully completed.
We should call it EEOC?
EEOP, Equal Opportunity Employment Plan.
Okay, thanks.
Joe?
So if we had 187 separations and 252 new hires, does that mean we increased head count by 65 people?
At any given time, it can look like that mostly because of temporaries associated with the Election Commissioner's Office. So it just, it varies from year to year. Next year, when we do this, because there was not a major election, there may not be as many. It may not look the same. It's a good question. Other questions?
Yeah, good question. I think this is the start of, again, what Karen was saying when we met to actually have more information or data about what our HR department does. Because when Karen sat down and was rattling off all this stuff that they did, it was like, wow. I don't know if everybody knows all the stuff that you do. So this is the start of it. And then what we, what I'd like is to, kind of what we do at the other departments is watch the trends. So now that we kind of are, we have this for 2016, we might want to just start trending it on some graphs so we can follow it as we go along. Okay. No other questions on the matrix or metrics? And if there's something else somebody wants to have added on there, let us know. So we can get that on the report as well. But this will kind of be our regular, when we need, always talk about this update. So item two, again, there's been a lot of movement on this. And so I thought it would be important for us to have an update on the ACA file.
Well, as you know, we're still required to file electronically ACA reports, forms for all the employees that are covered by our insurance. And in 2015 was the first year. 2016, there was a hope that there wouldn't be many changes made by the IRS. But they did go ahead and they made what they call schema changes. So that they were truncating information so that if a name was really long or an address was really long, that they were only allowing a certain amount of characters. So Oracle had to go in and make some changes in association with that. And through the process, we, because it took IRS a while to get this done, they actually extended the filing, electronic filing deadline date from January 31st to March 31st. And they gave us until March 2nd to get the paper forms into the employees' hands. Unfortunately, we filed our original transmission on March 28th. So we were a few days ahead and it was rejected. The next four transmissions were also rejected. We finally yesterday had a successful transmission, but it was accepted with errors. We have 40 errors that we have to fix. We have 60 days to get this resolved, which is May 28th. So we're working on a very, very tight timeframe in our department. It's not anything that we can do by ourselves. It involves us working with dot com and Oracle. And Matt has spent a tremendous amount of time working on this project. Also through the process, we found out, which we did not know and did not appropriately report, last year in 2015, that there were six employees that are retirees that were under an old GRE, which is a business unit under the Oracle umbrella for our county. And so we found them this year. But those individuals did not get included on our original transmission. We didn't find out about them until afterwards. And so now we're having to do paper forms. We went ahead and sent them the forms by paper as soon as we could because they were supposed to have them by March 2nd. They did not get them by March 2nd because we just found out about it a couple of weeks ago. And so now Oracle's come back and has explained to us that the form that we gave them is not the form we can use because we can't amend the electronic transmission. So we have to now do 1095Bs instead of 1095Cs. So those have been done along with the paper transmittal. But all of this is going to bring a red flag to the IRS if they happen to be looking. But there's some question, I talked to a couple of attorneys over at their home that are kind of experts on ACA. And they think that even though we aren't going to necessarily meet all the deadlines and not all the forms were done, and they should have been done, that they don't think that there's any penalties or the likelihood that the county would be penalized would be very improbable. We provide the coverage to all the employees that need it. And we're, we have to cover 95% of the people. So there's a 5% error margin. And so even with these individuals that we've missed, we're well within that error margin anyway. So it's unlikely. It's just that we have to have this done. So this is taking up a lot of our resources. And we've been working on it pretty steadily for the last two months. Trying to figure out why the transmission on March 28th kept getting rejected. So it ended up that it was due to an employee having a UPS, a UPS store post office box. And it didn't like that there was a suite number and a box number. And it took us...
Wow.
Mm-hmm.
Incompatible words in the same field, basically.
Yep. It took, it took a long time to get it straightened out. So this is still not resolved. This is something we're continuing to work on. We hope to have it resolved. I'm also, we, last year, we made a good faith effort. We did not receive any notices that any of our employees went up to the exchange to purchase any insurance from the marketplace. So it's unlikely that that would be the case this year either because the marketplace is going to be, for coverage, not any less expensive and probably more than even our retirees would be covered well. So I think we're okay, but I just wanted to provide an update to everybody on. This is where we've been spending our time.
Well, that's good that there's no penalties as well, so. And again, we'll continue to monitor that and bring the updates as they happen.
Thank you.
Brought to, anyway. Item three is the Safety Committee Discussion. And this is one that, again, when Karen and I were meeting, I guess I was under the assumption that we had one, but we really don't have one. And I think we should have one. And so Karen, if you want to give the detail, because this is kind of a biggie one in terms of the workers' comp act.
Yeah, hold on. Yeah, Section 48, 443 of the Nebraska statutes, which is part of the Nebraska's Workers' Compensation Act, requires that all private and public employers have a functioning safety committee. This law has been around for a long time. I was in private industry when this law was passed. This legislation was passed in 94. I worked for a unionized organization. Fortunately, we only had two unions. And so we had to have a safety committee with one union representative from each union on the committee.
Did you say fortunately?
Fortunately, we only had two. We didn't have 17. That's a lot to manage. You know, I'm not against unions, don't get me wrong. Okay. It's just that it's a lot more people's schedules to coordinate.
I'm just joking.
Oh, that's okay. So basically, we're supposed to, wherever, if you look at two A, it says for employers subject to collective bargaining agreements, establishment of the safety committee shall be accomplished through collective bargaining process. So those individuals that we have union agreements with, that is supposed to occur. It also states that a management employee is also, management employees are also supposed to be a part of the committee, but they don't have to be management. Management could delegate it to a non-management employee to participate. But on the back, there are some very specific requirements outlined in the Nebraska Administrative Code titled 230, Chapter 6, which is the Workplace Safety Consultation Program, regarding the formation and the purpose of the safety committees. And so this is something, while we're not responsible and we're not required to comply with OSHA regulations because we're a public employer, we still have requirements under this part of the Workers' Compensation Act to ensure that we're doing everything to avoid injuries and illnesses that could or might occur at the workplace. So, and it, you know, so I think that this is something that the HR committee is probably going to have to address, is to forming a committee. How do we reach out to the unions that have collective bargaining? Do they want to each have their own committee? Do they want to consider having, being a part of a larger committee where they have representatives? Or at least being offered an opportunity to have a representative? But I think this is something that needs to happen. And risk management probably needs to be involved from county administration's standpoint and the work comp people and...
I'll have Daryl contact you and talk about some issues that are getting... We used to have, what?
Commissioner Boyle and Patrick.
Oh, that's right. I'll go ahead and excuse him.
We used to have a safety committee for years and it kind of died on the vine because they would meet once a month and then they would sit at the table and stare at each other for a half an hour with nothing to talk about. So it just died years ago. But technically, you're right. I mean, all of the issues are being addressed, just not through a safety committee, technically. So yes, technically, we're supposed to have one, so we will. I'll have Daryl work with you to get some set up.
Okay.
I'd like to ask, and this is subject to total veto, but as most everything is that I say. But anyway, would it make sense for law enforcement, like maybe the sheriff, to be like the head of this? Or is it, or what's the safety part of it? What is it, terrorists or is it wet floors?
Wet floors.
It's mostly, it's mostly related to workers' compensation.
Okay.
So...
Oh, okay.
But, but I do think that, you know, departments may want to have representatives here because they may find that there are certain things in their department that are workplace risks that need to be addressed. And funding for those sometimes can be an issue.
You know, sometimes, I mean, the building commission does this thing. It does the building next door. Players are the expert on it. But anyway, you know, maybe they should have some kind of rule in this as well, particularly if we're talking about public facilities and, you know, elevators operating and floors dry and all that other kind of stuff.
I guess that's what I was going to ask is one follow-up question to our discussion with building commission members is, does the building commission have a safety committee? When I was in the private sector, the safety committee, I mean, they actually went around and did an annual audit, if you will.
Yeah, and that's required under the Senate Code.
And that's required. So they had a little check, you know, there were, there were people who were on the committee and they were designated as kind of safety officers, auditors, that went out with their little clipboard. And, you know, they made sure that there was a fire extinguisher. And then did all employees get trained on how to use that fire extinguisher?
Would you like to hear from the building commission today? I have no idea if we have a safety committee, but I can have, find out if somebody can talk to this name within the next five minutes and let us know.
Oh, well, that, we can add that to another...
All right.
Yeah. But I mean, it would be something we need to know.
Fine, I'll find out.
And that they should be a part of it. Commissioner Morgan?
I think you, I'll bet you have a safety committee because you have maintenance personnel.
Yes, yes.
And for sure, they have meetings for like a little company on a regular basis. The other thing you wonder about is, would other employees accounting, whatever, bookkeeping, because maybe they're lifting a box?
Yes.
You wonder, they'd have to be in it too, wouldn't they?
Yes.
Whether the company has 20 employees or 100 in the private sector.
Right. The committee is intended to be encompassing of departments and work performed by employees. And things like, are there exposed, like this example over here where we have the fan where the cord is laying out? That theoretically might be something that would show up on an audit checklist, that the cord shouldn't be out where somebody could catch their foot and trip and fall over it. I mean, it's just those kinds of little things that that's kind of what all this is about.
It's about where I'm sitting and I'm getting a draft and close to the mom.
But Mike, you requested the...
Workers' comp.
Because Commissioner Boyle likes to have it going on. Now, listen, I want to know too, because we have a list of things like, you know, say for example, a light bulb goes out and Marianne Borgerson's up on a ladder trying to change. Things that are forbidden, you know, like for example, for me to make coffee. And all those things are forbidden.
Well, and, you know, I think there is safety training too that needs to be done because I know that this is a really bad example. And it hasn't occurred here thankfully. But in another organization that I worked with, there were individual, there was an individual in the department in which I worked that needed to get something. And we didn't have facility personnel available. And so this person decided that it would be good to climb on the edges of the file cabinet drawers. So she pulled out the bottom one and then pulled out, and pulled out the end part. And then it all, yeah. And so she ended up with an injury. And so sometimes you think things that would be common sense, that people would know not to do, they just forget to do, so.
Did she make the video, morons?
No, but she did end up with a really big bruise.
Serious injury.
And it was painful. But, yeah, so I think, I think this is something that we can, you know, work towards.
Good.
Yeah, absolutely. Very important. And then, any other questions on the Safety Committee Discussion? Okay, we'll again keep a kind of an update on that and on our agenda. And then another interesting topic was training updates. And so again, thought the board should know where we are and have some discussion around this. Karen, again?
Okay, so the county, I think, is, has a fairly comprehensive training program overall. We do provide most, most, and I say most, new employees orientation. There are employees that do not get sent by their departments. And there are some departments that, because of the nature of, like a food service worker trainee, they're trainees, so they don't often get sent to new employer orientation. And so we're looking at ways to get necessary information into their hands without maybe having them sit through a four or five hour training class. So those are some things that we're working on our end. But through our new employer orientation, we do cover very, the major segments of the Civil Service Policy Manual. We make sure that we're talking about anti-harassment policies, the county benefit offerings. And they're given time during those meetings to actually enroll and to have the forms completed or get assistance to have them completed. In addition, all brand new employees are to complete e-learning courses on additional courses on discrimination and harassment. And they're supposed to have those completed within the first six months or during their probationary period. Some departments are better about making sure that their employees get that training done than other employees. And we just went through an onboarding and offboarding audit with Michael Dornicki. And we found that there aren't as many people that we would, that we would like. So that's something that we're going to continue to work on from our office to make sure that those individuals are being reminded whenever we can, whenever we have time available. That's always the major issue for us. We also provide classroom training, especially for those that are directing, managing, supervising, and leading employees. And we cover things like communication, leadership qualities, performance evaluations, conflict resolution, coaching for improved performance, correct the performance problem and so forth. The interesting thing is, is that some of these individuals that have attended this training have indicated that they think that their elected officials or department heads actually need to be attending this training. And most of those individuals do not. Or the chief deputies or the second in command. And so what we hear from employees sometimes is that, well, I really like the ideas that you guys are training us on, but it's not going to be supported in my department. Or, so the, the training that we're training isn't transferring into the job environment, the work environment very well. And we know that that's an issue and something that we have to try and work with the departments on improving. The...
Just a second, Karen.
No, I'm going to wait.
Okay.
The other thing is, is that we, we really need to do some mandatory compliance training every year, especially on sexual harassment and discrimination. It's not necessarily a law, but it is, it's strongly suggested by the EEOC. And many labor attorneys will tell you that if you're doing this training and your employees are participating and then you have a charge, that you're in a better position to defend as an organization that you were providing that training to employees as well as management staff. And so we feel that that's something that we also need to put more effort into. We've also done a lot of training with the managers on FMLA as well as ADA. But it seems that there's still a lot of confusion surrounding both of these laws and the regulations. We have employees that will call us and they think, okay, well, I had this FMLA for myself and I get 480 hours for that. And then now my mother is ill, so I get another 480 hours for that. And then now my child has an illness and has to have a surgery and I get another 480 hours for that. And so when we have to explain to them that, no, you get 480 hours in 12 months, regardless of how many particular events occur, sometimes those conversations are met with a lot of dissatisfaction. They feel like they haven't received the information appropriately. So I think that those are the things that need to happen. We've been holding, and I didn't include this stat in the metrics, but we are having more and more meetings for ADA accommodations. And I anticipate that that's only going to be increasing. Where we have individuals coming forward and requesting that they need some accommodation in their job, whether it's due to a physical or a mental disability. And so we're holding more and more of those meetings. Myself, Carol Donnelly from my office, we're usually the other two people. And then we also spend, we also include usually either Truce Silverick or Sammy Connolly from the county attorney's office. And those meetings can take a lot of time and a lot of follow-up because once we set accommodation, then we have to follow up and make sure of how it's working. And then we have to get new notes periodically from the doctors. And so it's, it's a fairly large process to manage. And right now, all of that is done manually through spreadsheets, as is our FMLA. We don't have software to support us on that. So we're manually doing a lot of this by entering information into Excel spreadsheets and monitoring the Excel spreadsheet. Which is not the most efficient or productive way to do it, but that's, that's what we have.
Okay. So on the training, for example, Mark Foxhall, for example, Corrections, does he do his own training program or does somebody else who's doing that? Just as one example.
Yeah, that's a very good question. Corrections and also Sheriff's Office, they do a lot of their... Um Corrections and also Sheriff's Office, they do a lot of their own training uh for their accreditation. Um we also do training for them and our e-learning system also supports their training needs.
And what do you think the cost would be a year that you're spending if I told you, hey, we've got someone else that's going to do all the training? What do you think that would save us? Is it three employees, is it two employees, what?
You mean like to have an outside organization do the training?
Right.
Um.
I mean, and just a wild number.
Ri- right now, I only have one person in my office besides myself that does training.
And you feel pretty good about that training that's being done?
N- no, it's not sufficient. Um Corrections, I I I I think it would be hard for us to find, I think some departments that are training is very specific, like Corrections training is very specific. To the requirements that are needed to take care of inmates and manage inmates in a jail. The same with the Sheriff's Office, there are very specific requirements. Then we have broader requirements that are more compliance related.
So if I said to you Karen, hey, um you don't have your job here anymore. And I want you to develop a training program that's really good for all the county departments or through your department. What do you think you'd spend to have a really good training program, Corrections, all of them? And develop that, would it cost five hundred thousand a year? Would it cost two fifty or a million?
I, I'd have to do some research on that quite candidly Commissioner. It 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 would be, it would be, it would be fairly costly. I mean, we would have to purchase materials that we don't have.
Now fairly costly, but some of us might be.
I I would.
A million dollars.
I I, I I couldn't even guess.
Start to.
It could be three hundred thousand, it could be five hundred thousand, it depends on.
Could it be more than a million?
Pro- probably not, I would not guess that it would be. Right now, we're paying eighteen thousand dollars a year for our e-learning system. But um what we'd like to do and and I've had some discussion with Mary Ann about this is Oracle has a new version available, which is called Fusion. Um and it will provide a learning management system platform, which would allow us to be able to deliver training to employees um electronically through that platform through a self-service mechanism. That would allow us to be able to report and manage that. Um that would be a tremendous assistance to us. However, it would mean that we would still have to purchase those training programs or create them ourselves. And there is still some training that needs to be done in a classroom. Um it just, it's better if that way.
Have you heard of anyone in Omaha that's really has a great training program? Union Pacific, UM C or somebody that's really on the edge that's great?
There's a number of organizations that have really good training programs, but they also have training depart- they have train, big training departments that are part of their HR department.
So you have heard of some in Omaha really are good?
Yes.
Can one of the like named one or two or three that would be kind of a model?
Well, Union, Union Pacific has always had very good training programs.
Okay.
Um they train safety, they train compliance and you know, they have some different laws than we do. Like they're covered by the railroad act and you know, different things. But a lot of the hospitals have excellent training programs because of the, you know, just the compliance nature of those. Um so um there are several banks in town that have their their training programs.
That's enough, I've given up the bank.
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I, one thing I was going to suggest is something I've found is a pattern of discrimination, whether it was in the city or if you're in the county and other places as well. And sometimes there are departments that just simply are, I don't want to say out of control, but have really, they have a history. When we get problems with people being sexually harassed or somebody bullied or uh something like that going on. Um it seems like there's a couple of departments that have, I suppose it's because of the kind of work they're involved in, that it it leads to more aggressive behavior. And I I really would like to see you take a look in the past to see where those complaints have been made. And uh really uh try to figure out what to do about it because uh, you know, sometimes uh some of the craziest things take place and people just, they don't even think they're harassing anybody, you know? Uh so if you do that, I think it'd be helpful because some of those departments uh need to really have some intense training, you know? In the city, I had a guy that consistently harassed women and the third time he did it, I said, you know, are you that? Don't, you know, and of course, when he got fired, that was good testimony. But anyway. Anyway, so, you know.
And life can get interesting because sometimes employees will file protection orders and then you have that person working in the department with another, with someone else, but they have to be so many feet away. And we've had a couple of those persons I've seen here. Um but, but fortunately, they haven't been between a supervisor and employee. It's been more just two people not being able to get along or.
And I know it's all stories, I gotta tell real quick about hers, let me, we worked at a station. And she, she was really mentally ill, she was really in trouble. And her mother used to encourage her and stuff and it was, she was a nice little Italian lady and she just lost it. But anyway, one day, uh she was in the front office and she took all the copy paper out of the boxes, okay? And she, nobody's paying attention and she stacked it above twelve feet high, she's up on the ladder and she's emptying boxes. She's got about, I don't know, ten reams of copy paper sitting there and she did it right next to them. And then she was peeking through it, that lady she hated. And the lady looked up and she screamed, that she went. And then she got fired. And the best part was when she came to the first level, she's with her mother and she's this nice Italian lady, the crucifix, the whole deal, unless I sound funny. And when they, when they said, you're still fired, the stuff out of her mouth was like her head was going around. I mean, she, she ought to beat me out of her fantasy. But anyway, you had to be there. I really enjoyed it.
So we, we, we do, we do know this is important, but I think another aspect quite candidly is that, and um I know that this is the story of most every organization. But I think it's especially true for governmental entities and nonprofit entities is that it's hard for people to send their staff to training. Because they don't have a lot of extra staff. So when they take someone out, you know, regularly for training, then it puts them behind in their work. And so we have found that and that was also one thing I had mentioned to Mary Ann is that we have had in the past two um non-county agencies that pay to come to our, our supervisory training. Um and they find it very effective training. And uh so we will, we will run a calendar and if there's seats left over, we reach out to those organizations and they'll send people. But then we'll have people that won't, that will have signed up but then won't come from our own employees and will contact them and they'll say, I was just too busy to get away. I couldn't get away. And 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 so that's, that's another, that's the other side of the training is, is having staff available, you know, some wiggle room for people to actually be able to. Whether it's do it at their desk or do it in a classroom, it's to be able to, actually be able to have time to do the training. So.
Any other comments on the training? Okay, last item is the item five, arrears payroll discussion.
Okay, well, um. Back in December of last year, um we had a committee meeting. It was, it was a one, one-time meeting, so this is a relatively new subject. Um and we have about, we have about twenty-three hundred employees give or take on a day. And other twenty-three hundred employees, about three hundred of them are left on, on the current payroll system. So um one of the things when we, when we started looking at this is would there be an advantage to not have a current payroll system? Basically, a current payroll system means that for some period of that paid period, you're forecasting ahead what those people are going to work. Um and so we talked about some of the advantages that might come from not having a current payroll, which would be that there would be more accurate reporting of leave. There would be a reduction in subsequent payroll corrections or adjustments. Um that there would maybe be increased understanding by employees on their paycheck because their balances when they got their paycheck would really be accurate. Whereas now if it's current, they think they have that much, but they actually use two days on the pay period that doesn't show up yet. And so we get a lot of calls in our department about that. Um it would reduce some payrolls for the clerk's office potentially. I can't remember if you do two or three current payrolls.
We would do two because we have a building commission.
Oh, that's, I forget about the building.
That is not included here.
I forget about the building commission. Um departments would no longer have to track which employees are current versus arrears. Um that for the people that are not on self-service, that still have timekeepers, that can be complicated when there's a change in staff training. Those individuals can be sometimes uh difficult. Um it can also, it would also reduce the number of benefit plans that are administrate, administered at, administered out of our office. Um the committee had discussed some options that might be available if we decided to proceed down this path. Um and we had, a lot of organizations used to just say, okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna do this, but that means that employee has to go without a paycheck. Well, most employees can't afford to go without a paycheck. I don't think I could go, afford to go without a paycheck. So allowing individuals to use their vacation to substitute the, for the paycheck they would miss, that would reduce the vacation that they would get paid out at the end if they had vacation left.
Ten days.
Yeah, ten days.
If they have.
Okay, so this, this.
Just a minute.
That's other petition, isn't it?
The other op, that, these are, these are options that maybe employees could opt to choose from. We're not saying that we would require any of them. Um you, some employees may choose to go without a paycheck if they had enough notice and it was in a month where there were three actual paid periods. Because we have two months out of every year where there's three paid periods instead of just the two. And so if people have enough advance notice, they may just say, it's okay, I can, I'll make adjustments, I'll save a little bit over the next six months or so and I can go without the, a paycheck. The, the other option is to utilize a hardship provision that's outlined in the Nebraska Wage and Payment Collection Act, which would basically allow the county to advance a paycheck to the employee. And then the amount of that paycheck would be deducted from their last paycheck because they would still have two weeks coming in arrears. Um while I was at Sarpy County, all of the employees there, there were six hundred and plus, um around sixty, every employee was on current. And they decided to go to arrears because of some of these same issues. And they um, they just went with everybody doing the hardship payment, um that, that hardship exception. And it took a little bit of education to explain how this was going to work. Um and I was one of the, I was the person who loved after that at Pird. And um so my last paycheck, I got a little bit, not a full two weeks, but I got a little bit. I had some vacation left on the books, I think Matt was another person. Um but the bottom line of this is, and if you'll read on the next page, the majority of this work would rest with the county clerk's office. I mean, our office would be willing to assist in explaining the changeover, uh help in supporting in any way possible. But the work really ends up being with the clerk's office because they do the payroll. Um and they're the individuals that have to make the changes to whatever changes would be necessary to the Oracle system. So depending upon their resources and ours and that comms, my, my personal recommendation would be to try and do this in December of twenty seventeen when we have three paid periods. However, I have not had a discussion with Dan, the committee that first got together, hasn't met again. So we don't really know if that's possible, possible or even plausible. Um it's just that sometimes it's easier to do it when there's a six-month notice in advance. And also at the beginning or close to the beginning of a calendar or a paid period, a new calendar year. So um but regardless, there would be a lot of planning and work that would need to be done in the committee. We definitely have to meet again to see whether this is something we want to pursue. But we wanted to at least surprise um the HR committee that this is something that we, we might like to do.
Well, and for discussion purposes, we need to go back just a little bit farther and explain, the majority of ours went to arrears. Why did just these three hundred not go and those folks went?
They, it wasn't a question of them going, basically, at, at one point in time, clerk's office decided that all new employees would be on arrears payroll.
Yep.
And they didn't change any of the existing employees who are on a current payroll. So basically, if you, if you've been here for more than roughly twenty years, you're on a current payroll, on a current payroll.
Anyone, anyone hired after two thousand two is on a current.
So they basically, hence from whatever date that was, I don't recall, everything forward, everyone's going to arrears.
But if I just let, I was just going to say.
So.
Okay.
Hang on, Patrick?
So in it, it does take a lot, I'm not going to speak for the clerk's office, it would take a lot of work. The intent when this was done was that in time, people retire, new people are hired and are paid in the arrears and that seems to be working. I, you know, sometimes I worry that, you know, we're like a problem in search of a solu- our solution in search of a problem. I don't know that this is a big enough problem, but really want to invest a lot of limited resources in this because it's going to fix itself over time. People will retire and new people will come in on the arrears.
Um Commissioner Boyle and then Sharon.
Well, I was going to very quickly suggest that maybe instead of uh this payback at the end of the thing, maybe you could do a payback period over eight months or six years. If you're making those, uh twelve hundred, whatever it is, if that's the, it'd be a hundred and fifty a month. And I don't know how you handle insurance premiums or any other deductions from the check that must be made, I'm not sure how that's worked, but um. I think it might be a good idea if it doesn't like, Patrick says, if it's not something that, it will work out, you know, another fifteen years.
It would probably offset.
It'll be one. I was just going to elaborate what Tim said. In two thousand two, the clerk's office did send out a memo and said all new hires would be put in a current status. In two thousand three, there was a second memo they sent out that said, anybody that goes on an extended absence and if they would go into unpaid status, when they came back on, they were, they went to arrears. So we have made um trickled down the number, it's two hundred and twenty-one today. And we've got five of them sitting right here in this room. Um and our youngest employee that's in a current status is thirty-three years old. So it might work itself out, but it's going to, it might be thirty years.
So we could fire a twenty-three year old.
Thirty-three. Thirty-three.
Oh my god.
Karen?
Yes.
That's all.
Did you have?
Oh, I was just going to say, just kind of, I was just going to say what, what, was going to say what Cherry said is that, you know, two thousand and, if they were hired in two thousand and one, they still have a long time to get to re- potentially to get to retirement, depending on what their age is. So this could go on for several more years. Um and the advantage is, is that it would reduce potentially time spent by both the clerk's office on doing additional payrolls. And our office in maintaining additional benefit plans that are set up specifically for people that have current payrolls. So those, those are the advantages.
Commissioner Morgan?
I said gee, but the way it is, let it cure itself.
And the timeframe that it cures itself is three years?
Potentially.
Well, I want to know a clarifex because I want to be on the other side. No, I, I, I don't think it's that big an issue, I don't, but it is, I, it's something, it's an issue, that's true, it costs some money.
Less than ten percent of the workforce.
No. But it shrinks every year.
Every year, it's runoff, yeah.
Dan?
I think uh the clerk's office would agree that it's, it, I mean, it'd be better.
Uh, the clerk's office would agree that it's, it, I mean, it'd be better if everyone was on the same payroll. Um, so I definitely wouldn't rule it out as far as trying to get it done, but um, I don't know if I can give you a timeline, except I can probably tell you that if we were to actually push forward through this side uh, this year, it's probably not doable in December twenty seventeen. And I, I'd like to give you a date, but I feel like in my short time here, the two times I recall I've done that, I was not right, so, you know, but.
Well, I, I, I think it's important enough, 'cause I, I remember when that happened, which to me was kind of a silliness of how we were doing it. But now that we have this smaller number, I think it's an easier fix at this time. So, you know, if it can't be this year, then I think we just shoot for a date where there's three payrolls in a, in the next year coming, and, and plan for the resources to just get it done. I mean, if that is done, it's done. Um, so anyway, I just think that having everybody on the same payroll makes much more sense than having two different ones. So, um, maybe the committee, as Karen said, could meet again and maybe talk through some more of the details as to a good time to make that change, what the resources would be and cost, and then maybe bring it back and have a further discussion. Sherri?
You know, I, I still think that the, the longer payback period, like if it were eight months or something, I don't know how that would work. Would that be a lot of work to make everybody crazy to, uh, where an employee is switched over, then they have, you know, a year to pay it back, I mean, it's such a small amount. Give you something that just wouldn't rattle them too much, because you're right, a paycheck to paycheck is a lifestyle today at big times. So I wouldn't wanna hurt the employees, so, but I think that may be a solution. If you spread it out so far that they, it's reasonable and they may accept it.
Yeah, that is an option. I, I know that when we did it at Sarpy County, the employees really liked the fact that they didn't lose a paycheck. And, and they just got the amount that they got advanced, taken out of their last check. Because it didn't, it didn't affect them at all, it was like they just kept going and they got the same amount of paychecks, and nobody, nobody got harmed at all.
That's probably the better plan of them all.
But, uh, but I know that when we met with the committee, there were some people on the committee that said, there are some individuals that have so much vacation, that they might just rather just say, use eighty hours of my vacation and call it good. So, I, I, I'm a short timer here, so I, I don't have that much vacation that I would want to have, so.
You're not one of the five.
I think you and I are one of them, aren't we?
I'm guessing, I'm.
Gang of five.
Oh, well, Sherri after that.
Sherri knows.
I know, I know who you are.
Me.
Marcos.
Patrick.
Marcos.
Patrick.
Patrick.
Commissioner Boyle.
Oh, well. About it, you five.
Mine was compounded from being an election commissioner back then.
I would go the last, last payroll, that's the career of your career. I would rather have taken out of my last payroll in my career than.
Oh, for god's sake.
You're talking thirty years from now, Patrick.
I'm retired in about twenty-five years.
That's what we wanted to hear you say, because you.
Next Tuesday's gonna be your last day.
Did you then?
We've actually, we've actually. I think they will.
You're making more in ten years.
Eighty people drop off.
You're paying your five thousand dollars today, that's all, that's advanced, but in ten years, you're making fifteen hundred.